Are we ready to go ahead and get started? Are we going to wait a few minutes?
I believe Brad that we have four members. I would go ahead and begin.
All right. Well, then I will go ahead and call the virtual, the planning of the Stillwater Planning Commission of July 7th order. I believe we have all four members and they are visual, so we don't need to do a roll call of the members. So I think we can begin with our first item for business, which is short-term rental STR 0037, review of application from Matthew Jones for a short-term rental property at 620 West Ranch Avenue in the residential small lot, single-family RSS zoning district.
Yes. So Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this is a short-term, a short-term rental request. As you may remember, under the short-term rental ordinance, the process is set up so that once an application is received, property owners adjacent to the property are notified. If there is an objection, objection comes to the planning commission for review and approval, and it's handled in a process similar to an SUP. So we have three of these, and this is the first of the three on the agenda for tonight. This is at 620 West Ranch Avenue. I can give you an idea of actual property. It is the hatch pattern here. So this is just to the northwest of Boomer Lake off of Washington. Again, property in question is right here. We received one objection from an adjacent property owner that faces Yew Street. So this would be a property that objected that's immediately north. They cited a number of concerns and their written concerns are in your agenda packet. So you've received that written objection. That basically is presenting this as an information item for you and then the applicant or the representative can speak to the proposal and the request, and then those objections as well. With that, do you have any questions of staff before we go any farther?
Not seeing any comments from us or questions for us for staff. So I think at this point, we open the public hearing and we will take a discussion by the applicant. If they're here.
Yeah.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for letting us attend. My name is Matthew Jones. This is my wife, Stevie Jones. I was born and raised here in Stillwater and have lived here for most of my life. And I am the owner of the property at 620 West Ranch Avenue. Purchased the home in 2017. I did a lot of work to get it up and livable and had to do things such as buy a new roof, update the sewer lines, things like that. We rented this to some college students in 2018. We went through a lot of the same problems that many other landlords go through with long-term rentals, trying to collect the bills, trying to get them to keep the yard cleaned up. And it's been a very stressful process. So we've looked at utilizing the short-term rental. We work with Airbnb and it has a lot of benefits that we feel add a lot to the neighborhood and they add a lot of, or they remove a lot of stress from our lives. And so we are actually at the property more frequently. We're there before and after every guest. We're there to take the trash out. We're there to see when the lawn needs to be mowed and things like that. And so we are much more hands-on. And we actually take a lot of pride in the house. We take a lot of pride in the upkeep of it. Because as a landlord that's trying to rent to a short-term renter, it's important for us to make sure that it is a good presentable piece of property. And so we are constantly looking for ways to improve, constantly looking at what we can do to the curb appeal of property and things like that. I don't know if the family that addressed the complaint is here, but I would like to say that I am sorry. I did not get a copy of the complaint from the city until today. So their complaint was dated February 24th, and that is a shame that that was not sent to us because I agree with a lot of their complaints. There are issues there. And I would be more than happy to jump in and take care of those. It was never brought to my attention that anything needed to be done to the easement. There is a fence at the back of the property. I mow up to the trees along the fence. I think I've been behind that fence one time. And so I was not aware of that. And now that they have voiced that in this public forum, I own that. I take responsibility for it and I am all about making sure that that is taken care of and is not a problem for them or the other neighbors or things like that. Was just not aware of that requirement or even that desire from them. Nobody had ever made a request to me during the three years I've owned it. And so I will take care of that from now on. In terms of going in and making sure that the yard is maintained and things like that, they complained about a orange cable. That's from Suddenly. We ordered internet. They've installed that. I'll be more than happy to reach out to them and get that taken care of and find out what they can do about it or what I am allowed to do about their internet cable into the house. I don't know why they would do it that way, but that's just how they installed the internet. On their issue of introducing a new concept, there are other Airbnbs that have made requests and then approved in the neighborhood. So we're not the first. And I think that when it comes to renters in general, there's a lot of benefits to a short-term rental like this. And us as the people that own these and manage these, constantly being involved, keeping them up and things like that, I think is a benefit to the neighborhood, a lot more than, not to throw anybody under the bus, but a long-term rental where somebody's concerned about one time, making sure that it looks nice and then hoping somebody takes care of it. So we're not the first people to go in and do that. And we also take a lot of pride in being able to be more discriminatory about what happens. It's not allowed to be a party house. It's not allowed to have an unlimited number of guests. We are much more discerning about that. And so we try to go in and be good stewards to the community and to the neighbors. And in terms of the yard, I'm very proud of that private yard in the backyard. There are a lot of trees. There are a lot of shrubs. And I like the privacy that it goes and gives me. If somebody has a problem with those trees or things like that, I'm more than happy to go in and address it. What goes on in somebody's backyard, I'm not necessarily sure, is something that is a matter for a public forum like this. We have ordinances. I'm willing to follow any of those. So if there's something that I'm doing that I'm not supposed to as a homeowner or if it's a short-term rental or as a long-term rental, I'm all about making sure that we're following the rules and that we're abiding by that. But as far as private property, it is private property. That being said, I do, you know, always want to try to improve the look of my yard and I will do a better job of trimming trees and keeping it mowed and things like that. Just because that's what a good land person should do. And so trying to go in and take care of that and improve the value of my property is in my best interest. And so yes, I will go in and take care of that. And I'm sorry that something I've done or something I neglected has offended somebody. But for me, I filled out the application. My home address is on there. My phone number is on there. If any neighbor, not just this one that complained to the city, if anybody has a complaint about my property or what happens there, I'm very personable. I'm very approachable. I'm available anytime to address concerns and things like that about the upkeep of the property or the people that are there. And I don't speak for every short-term rental owner, but I would think that that would be a great thing for everybody in the city to be familiar with, is that these licenses are public record. The city knows who we as owners are. And if anybody has a complaint, talking to us as owners first would be a great way to resolve any situations like this. And if it's, you know, not something that somebody is doing, code enforcement is there. There's a lot of ways to go in and make sure we're keeping the city clean and we're being good stewards of the community and basically being good neighbors. And so, you know, regardless of this being a short-term rental application, we want to be good neighbors. We want to do what's in everybody's best interest. I'm sorry that, you know, my neglect on certain things has offended somebody, so they would raise an objection to this. But as a good neighbor, I recognize where their valid complaints are and I take responsibility for that. And so those are things that are being brought to my attention today for the first time. And I will go in and address those things that were brought up. Yep. So thank you for your time.
Are there any questions from this board from the applicants? All right.
Brad, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I do. So Mr. Jones, forgive me. So just to be perfectly clear, you have not received anything from the city, no code enforcement notifications, no letters, no complaints from any other residents in the neighborhood or anyone else other than the letter that was presented to us from the Weddeman family dated on February 24th. Is that accurate?
I received the notification of the meeting tonight. I believe that was a trifold pamphlet. I received the previous one. This was originally scheduled for, I think, March 23rd or 24th. I've received that. I believe if you go back maybe a year ago, I think half the houses on my neighborhood received a mow your lawn notice. Just because it was either you mowed it before it rained or you weren't able to mow it for a week. And so I believe there were probably about five of those on Ranch Avenue. Outside of that, no, I have not. I've received the notice. They posted on the door. The police posted it on the door. They also mailed it to me. I received that. So there's no broken lines of communication with either the local police department or this application process. But as far as the specific letter, it was on the side of the agenda tonight. That was the first time that I was notified of what the specific complaint was. I was very intimidated by this process because I had no idea what somebody's specific complaint to my Airbnb was. And I feel a little bit better knowing specifically what it is and that these are things I can address.
Other questions? Not seeing any or hearing anything. We'll do now others who wish to speak in favor of the applicant. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant? I suppose insofar as if you wanted to say something beyond your husband, you can.
Yeah, I guess that, I mean, for us, it's very important, the community. And we want to make the community better. For us, going is maybe one or twice a week and taking care of the house is something good for the neighborhood and for the community. And I think that the Airbnb or short-term rental request should be approved.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak in favor? Seeing none. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for staff's alternatives.
Okay. So Mr. Chairman, the way the process works for the short-term rental ordinance is that when there's an appeal, it, as I mentioned before, it comes to planning commission through the, similar to the SUP process, you make a determination whether or not to approve or deny the request. If someone still wishes to object after that and make an appeal of the planning commission's determination, they would appeal that to the city council, who would ultimately would have the final authority. But if there are no objections to whatever decision you make tonight, then it stands and then the applicant can move forward.
All right. Any final questions for staff by the planning commissioners? Doesn't seem to be. Then discussion amongst the commission. Any comments, questions, motions?
Motion to approve?
Okay. So we have a motion by Brett to approve the application and seconded by Mike. So Chelsea, do you need to call us out?
Yes. Rickelman?
Yes.
Shanahan?
He's just muted. He's got unmute.
You have to unmute.
Yeah, he's working on it. Thumbs up. Can you do a visual thumb up or thumb down?
Okay, I finally unmuted.
Yes. So yay or nay?
Yay, yes.
Okay, okay.
Mr. O?
Yes.
And Mr. Alred?
Yes.
That's four yays.
Then the application passes four yay, zero nays. All right. We'll now move to the next item, which is a short-term rental STR 0038, review of application from Asia and Sky Cooley for a short-term rental property at 1022 South Fairfield Drive in the residential, single-family, small lot with planned development overlay RSS U D zoning district. Staff.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is the second STR application on the agenda tonight. It is listed at 1022 South Fairfield Drive. The subject property is in the hatch pattern here. You can see a number of local streets. This is off of Country Club on the west side of town. It is, again, for the short-term rental ordinance, an item that comes to you because the applicant filed their application and once property owners within the vicinity were notified, one of the adjacent property owners objected. And so then it comes before you. The applicant, I do believe, is online, but in terms of any specifics, we'll let them speak to their proposal. But those are the basics of the case. Staff can answer any questions you might have.
Does not look like there's any questions for staff. I will then open the public hearing and ask for the applicant or someone to speak, that speaks in favor of the application to speak first, if you're on the line. I don't think I hear anyone or see anyone who's commented in as the applicant. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing and ask for staff recommendations or staff comment.
Okay. So again, the process from this point going forward, you determine whether or not it's appropriate and recommend approval or denial. If anyone wishes to file an appeal, it would go to city council, who would ultimately, again, make that final decision. But you're basically at this point making the determination whether or not to approve or deny the short-term rental application and let the applicant forward.
Any final questions for staff? Okay. Seeing none, I'll open this for discussion by the planning commission. I might remark that in the letter that we received in our packet from Ms. Kadavy, they did make reference to a homeowners association or governing documents. It just, this has come up before and I just wanted people to recognize that what, that we don't enforce homeowners associations or documents of that sort. Those are, so if there was a disagreement in that regard, that's something that has to be taken up by the association against the residents, not from the planning commission per se. We do not enforce that either way. I think I'm correct on that because it's come up in the past and I wanted to be sure that they knew that. Other than that, if there's comments or a motion or anything from the planning commission.
Please forgive me. I have some questions. I'm not sure if this is directed to staff or to the chair. So I'll just ask and we can go in that direction. So with respect to previous applicants that have filed similar applications with homeowner covenantsies that have been in disagreement or in violation of said homeowner covenantsies, what has the planning commission done in that regard? Have they approved it and moved it forward? Or have they, how has that worked in the past?
I personally can remember one time it came up. And in that regard, we did approve it. But the comment had been that we, we don't determine, you know, these sort of disagreements between the homeowners association per se. I think that it was approved or one was approved and one was not, but it was to be independent thereof. That we weren't supposed to adjudicate some way, whether it should or shouldn't. So the decision whether we approved it or didn't approve it was irrespective of that particular point.
Fair. I have a, I have a follow-up question if I may. So I have some questions for the applicant. The applicant, to my knowledge, is not present this evening to answer questions. So my question would be, are we allowed? Am I allowed to make a motion to table this until they can? Or is our only option approval or denial? Mr. Hawkins, can you, or Mr. Chairman, can you, either of you address?
As a point of information, Mr. Chair, I can handle that part. You do have the option to table for, to a certain date. So if you want to table to, for 30 days or until the next planning commission meeting to give them an opportunity to be here to speak or answer questions, you can certainly do that. Anytime you table an item, you need to table it to a date certain, however. So we, you would just need to keep that in mind.
I recall that from one of our previous tables. So yeah.
You could move to accept it. You could move to deny it, or you could move to table to a specific date.
Correct. Those are your three alternatives.
Three alternatives. And it just, the other part is, is if it were denied, it still goes to the city council, even still.
Yeah, I actually, as a point of information, it doesn't necessarily automatically get appealed or moved to city council. It would just be a matter of if you move to deny and vote to deny, anyone involved in the case, whether it be the applicant or an adjacent property owner, could appeal the city council who would hear the matter and make the final decision.
Very good. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
If there are no other questions by the commission, I would make a motion to table this until the next planning commission meeting or 30 days if someone else has another option. I do have questions for the applicant and I'd like to make a motion to table that so that I can ask those questions.
I think you're saying August 4, I believe, would be the first meeting in August. If my calendar, if I'm reading my calendar correctly, is that the date that we all?
I thought there was another one in July.
Well.
If you go 30 days out, it would be August 4th. If you were to go to the next meeting in July, it would be the 21st of July.
I see. Yeah. Well, I'm happy to, I'm happy to make a motion to table that to August 4th. That gives 30.
August 4th, August 4th. All right. Do we have a second?
A second.
It has been moved and seconded that we table the short-term rental STR 0038 until the planning commission meeting on August 4th. And I think we'll then vote.
Okay. Mr. Rickelman?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. O?
Yes.
And Mr. Alred?
Yes.
The vote is four yes, zero no.
The motion passes four yes, zero no. Our next item is a short-term rental STR 0041, review of application from Bruce Wilkerson for a short-term rented property at 1215 South Chester Street in the residential, single-family, small lot RSS zoning district. Staff.
So this is the third and final of the short-term rentals. Again, as the chair mentioned, address is 1215 Chester Street. This is a item that you can see here in the hatch pattern. It's off of 13th and Chester. So this would be over, what is it, the east central, central part of town. As with the others, applicant made their application, notices were sent out and that he received an objection and that triggered the process that we're dealing with tonight. The objection is in written form and it's in your packet. Not sure if the applicant on this item is here to speak or not. But as with the others, your options are approved, deny, or table to a date certain. The applicant can appeal if you were to deny and they wanted to continue. If you approved and an adjacent property owner wanted to appeal, they could do that. The item would then go to the city council for final determination.
Very good. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, it's been pointed out, the property manager is online and here to speak on behalf of the applicant.
All right. Well, then I'll open the public hearing and we will hear comments from the property manager for the applicant. I don't know that.
You're probably, can you hear me?
Yes. Okay.
Okay. Yes. My name is Mark Weiser. I'm actually not formally a property manager, but we do coordinate the cleaning and maintenance and so on because the Wilkinson's, that differs in law from a property manager who enters into contracts and things. Because we're not a real estate broker. But actually, Mr. Wilkinson was on, but he said he keeps getting kicked off. So I don't even know what the nature of the complaint is. This property, they, they. there are a total of three active Airbnbs in a, within two blocks of this, of this property. They, the Wilkinson's own one of those other ones that is, is already permitted. I couldn't tell you the permit number. That property is at 1124 South Fern. It's about a block and a half away from this property. And again, there are, there are a total of three within, within less than two blocks of here. Their two properties are probably among the three nicest properties inside and out in that four square block area. They, in fact, in one case, they took them down to the studs and just they, they've done a really nice job and it's one of the, they, they have some of the nicer properties there. As far as the checklist, the short term residence checklist you have, issues that make it incompatible with the uses of adjacent properties, most of which are rentals as it is. But other than that, since I don't know the nature of the complaint, I can just take questions.
Any questions? Well, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant? Do I need to get Mark's name and address for the record? Chelsea, is that something I should have asked? Since he's technically not the applicant per se.
Sorry, yes, please.
I'm sorry, Mark. Could you, just for the record, your name and address?
Sure. 223 North Old Highway 51, Stillwater, Oklahoma, 74075.
And Mark Weiser. Thank you very much. I'm sorry about that. I should have asked about that. All right. Is there, is hearing no one else in favor of the applicant? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the applicant? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for staff recommendation. Or staff, not recommendations, but you know what I mean.
So staff's recommendations are, are similar to the other items. You can approve, deny, or you can table to a date certain. The objections raised in writing deal with deterioration of property values as well as just overall impact on the neighborhood, citing the fact that Stillwater is a college community. With that, staff can answer any questions.
Seeing none, are there any comments, questions or discussion amongst the, or planning commission? Do we have, do we have a motion?
Well, I, I do, excuse me, I do have a question. Mr. Chairman. In the third paragraph, the person who objects to this request says that many Airbnbs simply become party houses. Was there any factual evidence or data presented to back up this claim of many Airbnbs become party houses?
Nothing in the letter itself.
Okay. Okay, that answers my question.
What is your recommendation then?
That we approve.
And I second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approved the application. We will now vote.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Ms. Jerome?
Yes.
And Mr. Allred?
Yes.
The vote is for yes, zero no's.
The motion, then the application is passed for yes to zero no's. Our next item on the agenda is an annexation, ANX 20-01, to establish recommendation of appropriate zoning classification for property subject to proposed annexation of Stillwater Springs subdivision at the northeast corner of 19th Avenue in Jardole. Vote staff, something different.
It, it is, and we are trying to make sure that we get PowerPoint up for you. Wanting to be a little temperamental at the moment, so my apologies. So under, as we do that, what I'll do is basically share how we got to this point. So staff received a request for annexation from a property owner named Lance Swindell. And they basically do single family homes. This is off of, just outside the city limits. It is off of Jardole and 19th Street. And essentially what the applicant is looking at doing is then is requesting annexation into the city. And so with that in mind, staff will walk you through. I can get the shares work. Bear with me here. Okay. This not seem to want to work. Okay, so what the applicant is looking at doing is single family subdivision. In terms of the scope of what planning commission does, your role in this process is to review what is the appropriate zoning recommendation to city council. You do not actually review the annexation itself, whether or not it should be allowed. You simply look at whether or not what is, what the appropriate zoning would be. And so that's why the staff report is written the way it is because we want to emphasize. Again, forgive me, my Zoom is actually reacting up, so. Can everyone see the screen in front of them? Or do they just see me?
You, I think is what I was seeing. Yeah, you and a blank screen that says you've started screen sharing. I do, I have the, at least the sheet you gave us that's on the website that I could pull up, but I don't know that that's going to be much help.
It's okay. We, we have an alternative here that we're going to work on real quick. So I'm going to send the PowerPoint to Cindy. Just to make sure that we can get this. Okay, so as I said, the way the process works, the city council will make a recommendation based on state statutes. Planning commission's role in this process will simply to be making a recommendation on what the appropriate zoning will be. And that essentially is going to be, when you look at Sash, the staff report, it recommends RSS zoning. And what we have happening is subdivision with a number of lots just outside of the city limits. Originally, when the comprehensive plan was written in 2013, the comp plan recommended a land, future land use designation of industrial. What happened between then and now is we had continued growth and development on that side of town in small bits and pieces. It was primarily residential that grew out to this area. There is residential land use classifications to the north as well as to the west. We've seen small scale residential growth over time since the comp plan was developed. And so in terms of how you make the pivot from a future land use designation to all lot, single family residential zoning, we basically look at it as an unanticipated opportunity. So at this point, Cindy, I believe is going to try and share presentation for it, so you can see graphically what we're looking at. When you look at the map in the packet, you see a general hatch pattern on that area map that shows essentially three areas that are included in this discussion. So there are three tracks. Track three is the track that the person making the request owns and is looking, is in the middle of developing right now. That's the area that's right now being called Stillwater Springs. The other two tracks are adjacent to it and are considered part of the annexation process. Again, this is about, for your discussion, what is the appropriate zoning recommendation? Staff is recommending RSS zoning for track three. The, the staff recommendation talks about RSS for all three tracks, but that again is something I believe the applicant is, has some other thoughts on as well. And that's something that they're here to discuss. So to give you a little bit bigger, clearer picture, here are the three tracks. Track three again is the Stillwater Springs track. This is what's being developed right now. Track one and two immediately to the west next to Jardole and next to the city limits are, are part of this discussion as well. They had, can be a, a single family residential or they could be a medium family residential. Next screen, please. Okay. So this gives you an aerial view of the three tracks. Just as well as what the road looks like in this area. Remember this area from previous discussions about development over here off of Payne and 17th. About a, over the last year, we've had that development start and go through the preliminary plat process. This, because it's outside of the city limits, has not been reviewed with regard to anything other than the plating process because we are looking at water and sewer connections. So staff has had some discussions with the applicant, but again, our review for tonight focuses just on what the appropriate zoning recommendation is. Next slide, please. So this gives you an idea of the proposed plat that they're looking at developing. This is the Stillwater Springs development. This is what the applicant actually owns. And so this gives you an idea of the lot layout. We would recommend for RSS zoning. Staff feels that that is the most appropriate because of the size of the lots and the nature of the layout of the development. RSS certainly could be used as the appropriate zoning for the other tracks of, if and when the city were to annex any of these. Next slide, please. So we'll go through these quickly. These are just some of the, the pictures of the development and progress at the moment. And Cindy, you can just kind of flip through these. They're working on the housing and infrastructure concurrently and trying to do a number of structures at one time. Again, these are just continued progress photos of the construction at the site. This gives you the future land use map for the community. This is the larger picture, but over here off of Jardole, north of the wastewater treatment plant, you see some gray as well. That gray is the industrial future land use. The yellow is more of the low density residential. And again, that was back in 2012, 2013, when this was adopted. Things have changed quite a bit since then and, and so that's where the idea of unanticipated opportunity comes into play. And I believe on the next slide, Cindy, we have a bit of a close up right there that gives you a little bit closer look at that specific intersection with current future land use designations are. Next slide, please. So with that, staff would be happy to answer questions. And again, as we go into the public hearing part of this and the, the open discussion, staff is making a recommendation of RSS zoning for track three. It is, it's not totally compatible with the comprehensive plan, but it does fulfill a need, identify needs for additional residential properties. It also is a designation that in this case goes back to the, again, that idea of unanticipated opportunity. At the time we did the comp plan, no one thought probably that we would be seeing residential growth in that part of the community or on that flank. I think industrial land use is probably thought of simply because of its location in relation to the sewage treatment plant. But again, there was an opportunity that no one anticipated then that came online or is coming online. So with that, staff would answer any questions you might have.
Questions from the commissioners for staff? Does the, oh, go ahead. Mike, speak.
No, go ahead, Brad. I'll follow you.
Well, I was just going to say, does the, does this, are they platted? It's clear they're building stuff in there right now. You showed a bunch of pictures of houses. Are they on lots that are RSS lots? Like if we say RSS, I mean.
Is it platted? It's platted.
So it's, so is, and the, and the streets are in conformance with city street, all that stuff is, that's right? I don't want to.
So again, that, that kind of goes outside the realm of the discussion for the proper zoning. But in terms of, is it, are they working toward a platted, normal type of, of residential development? Yes, they are. They're looking at 120 single family residential homes, 12 outlots. They have been working on the infrastructure. And the lots range in size from 6,577 feet to 17, just over 17 in size, so varying lot sizes. So it's a, a development that they are, we're in the middle of working on to be a typical urban development.
All right. Mike, sorry, I jumped on your question.
No, no, that's fine. Now, in the C3 comp plan of 2013, that re, that revision of the comp plan, it was envisioned that this land would be industrial, even though the land was outside the city limits. Is that correct, Ryan?
That's correct. And Cindy, if you would go back a couple of slides right there, you can see that gray area is where the industrial future land use classification exists around the, the north and northwest flank of the sewage treatment plant. The, I, I believe the the folks that own track three, simply because you've got a development that's going to be more of a typical suburban residential development would argue that RSS would be an appropriate zoning in spite of the future land use class on this map. Simply because what we thought in 2013 has changed a lot in some ways on the fringes of the city over the last few years. And the other property owners probably would argue more of an agricultural type zoning as a recommendation because they're not at this point totally sure the direction they want to take or the scale of development and the timing of it. And so they probably would, based on their in feedback, would want to keep it zoned agricultural until they know exactly what they want to do and but you're right, that, that is an industrial land use classification on the future land use map.
And at the time, or even in the ensuing, what, seven years, there's been no inquiries from possible projects about using this land for industrial purposes?
None to my knowledge. In the time that I've been on staff, the discussions that, that I know of have all been The discussions that that I know of have all been centered around varying scales of residential development.
Okay, so in essence, taking this area off the table for potential industrial is not going to have any impact on economic development.
None that we can anticipate. We still have a large air, large number of areas that are. Classified on the future land use map as industrial that we could utilize.
Right, that are probably better situated. Okay, thank you.
So there are, there are three, three tracks. And we're looking at the third one. That's being built on currently. The other two tracks, are they owned by the same person? Are they owned by other individuals? The ones that are along Jardot.
Right, the the tracks along Jardot are owned by other individuals. So three tracks, three property owners. The. The owner of track three is the one that initiated the request for annexation. The owner of track three is the one that. Started the process and has been talking with staff and been the biggest proponent of development. Some of the other owners in that area are have talked with the city often on at times, but. It it's been in small pieces. This is the, this is the full-scale development that that's going on at that intersection. And hence the request for annexation. They've been working off and on with staff. Over just over a year, I would say. I know we've had discussions since I've been here. To give you an idea of of timeframe. And with regard to zoning, that was. An item that started to be discussed once the actual request for annexation came in.
So and and maybe I'm I'm not clear on this, but for annexation. Has to be adjoining property that is actual city limits. So for annexation purposes. X one and two have to be part of it before track three can. Is that correct?
Technically and legally speaking, yes. However, as part of the annexation process. Whether or not it a a property is eligible, like track three. Versus track one and two are not part of the discussion that planning commission has.
Right.
You truly are just saying to the city council, if and when you decide to annex these tracks. We recommend these zoning classifications.
Right, right. Seems to me that based upon what's already happened on the property, the only logical answer is the RSS. But that's, that's my way of thinking, but.
Well, let's, let's get the, we have people that want to speak. If there's no more questions, we'll have them speak or open the public hearing and then we can come back and we can just, we'll have discussion on that. Unless there's any more questions for staff particularly. Say none, then let's open the public hearing and we will have those speaking in favor and first of which, of course, is the applicant who I think is on. On the line, ready to speak. Please give your name and your address for the list for the record.
Roger Ghost, one thirteen E State, Ghosted Associates. Stevens here beside me, he's going to present, but he's on my computer. And then Lance Windell is on here. He's the developer owner. And all this, this project went through the planning commission on November fifth, two thousand nineteen. Preliminary plat was approved at that time. Follow-up submitting the sewer and water plans. If you're outside the city limits, you're required to. Submit a request for annexation. That's what brought us to this point is with our final sewer and water plans. We submitted a request for annexation that was turned in around May tenth. For the Stillwater Springs development. I'm gonna let Steven take it from here.
Just to to clarify and expand upon what Ryan said with the zoning, there's three tracks, the two tracks running Jardot are six point one and six acres. Then Stillwater Springs is track three, that's thirty-nine point six acres. The preliminary plat generally confirm conforms with the. The RSS zoning district. And like Roger said, with the water and sewer, that's why we're here. So from a zoning standpoint. Like it's been discussed already, we don't conform to the the C three plan, but. With what's going on in the area and the demand in Stillwater, the RSS is the the logical choice. There's any questions for us or we can let Lance talk and then answer any question.
Doesn't look like there's any questions for you, Roger, the ghosts is, so. Maybe we'll say then Lance, if you'd like to speak now or say something, you can certainly do so.
Thank you. Just just appreciate your time this evening. We are building one hundred and twenty single-family homes and we have been working on this project. Actually, I think we we started talking to the city staff about it about two and a half years ago. And and are moving forward, but you know, definitely want to want to be involved with City Stillwater and they use their use their facilities and. That that's it, subject to questions.
Any questions? Any question? Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the? Not even favor of, I suppose in favor of. The annexation requesting, let's put it that way. We have someone. Who wishes to speak in opposition?
Yes.
Somebody. You've got, you're getting us an echo on your your line. So.
Can you hear me now? Still bad echo. I don't know. I'm sorry.
That's alright. I'll just sit back on this.
Okay. This child's a little bit too good.
Okay.
Out of the room here. If you want to sit down, I'll get you started. You're you're betting on Charles.
Okay. Okay, I can see myself. Can you see me?
We can. Please give your name and address for the record and go ahead.
Sure. My name is Lee Tarrant. I am the current owner. Of what's identified as track one on your diagram. I wanted to speak in favor of the annexation. Simply because I've I've dealt with Lance Windell. I actually sold him the land that he's developing. And so. I I would just wanted to speak in in favor of it. I don't think our particular tract is suitable for RSS. Simply because we, it's approximately six acres. My wife and I have no plans to develop it or put additional houses on it. There's already a house there, a barn, several outbuildings. We wanted to keep it that way. A zoning, an ag zoning would make sense to us for our particular tract. But I think annexing the entire. Tracks one, two, and three would be a good thing. It would give access, it would. Help Lance and his development. And I have no objections to.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there any questions or comment on the for the? Was there anyone who wished to speak? Anyone else who wishes to speak at this point? Positive or negative? I'm not seeing anything. So with that, I will close the public hearing and ask for the staff recommendations.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, based on. The the pattern of development that's proposed and under construction for track one. As well as the current nature of tracks two and or one and two. Staff is recommending that RSS zoning be recommended for track three. Again, because of the size of the development, the nature of it. And the fact that they they're currently in construction. Staff recommends ag zoning. It was certainly acceptable to RSS zoning for tracks one and two, simply because we have. That nearby as far as RSS zoning, but egg simply because of the size of the lots. And it's on the the fringe of the community. Again, that is with regards to this discussion, staff's only recommendations. You can find that the request and. Staff's recommendation is appropriate and approval as we presented. You can find that it's not appropriate and deny the recommendation. Or you can table the item to a date certain if you feel more discussion is needed. But again, the whether or not the annexation should go forward, whether or not that's appropriate, legal. Is not within the bounds of the the discussion. Of the item at hand. It is simply about what is the recommendation of appropriate zoning if and when it is annexed. Questions staff can answer.
Doesn't look like any questions for staff, so we'll open it up for discussion amongst the. Planning commissioners or motion, but discussion. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And the approve is as the staff recommended, which was RSS for the plot. Three and agriculture for one and two. Is that what you're, what you were saying?
Correct. Forgive me for not specifying that.
No, no, that's fine. Because it's by video, I just want people that are listening to to pick up on that.
Correct, yeah, thank you, yeah.
Nice second.
And seconded. It has been moved and seconded that we accept staff recommendations of RSS for. Flat three and agriculture for one and two.
Mr. Rickopen?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Room?
Yes.
And Mr. Oren?
Yes.
So that's four yes, zero no's.
The motion to recommend RSS and ag based on those plots has been approved for yes, no, zeros. The last item or the next item, sorry, the next item is a specific use permit, SUP twenty dash oh one. Requesting review and approval for a specific use permit to establish a medical marijuana dispensary. That property addressed as one sixteen North Main Street in the Commercial General CG District. Staff.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this is an SUP for a medical marijuana dispensary. The subject's location is here in the hatch pattern. You can see it is off of Main Street between Virginia and Elm. This is the aerial view of the property. Inside the red. This is the street level view. You can see a handicap parking stall and an ADA ramp as well as some other parking. Right off the alley. They currently have their their O M M A license that they do have. Parking available on site and meet all of the SUP requirements. With that, staff can answer any questions that you might have.
Questions by the commissioners? Seeing or hearing, ah. Mike, is that a yes or just you're holding your thumb to something? Alright.
No question.
Okay, sorry about that. Hearing that, I will open the public hearing and ask for the applicant or representative to speak. Please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jim McCollum. I am representing as property manager, the owners of the real estate. And I believe our tenants are here with us too. We're here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from staff? I mean, any questions from the commission? Seeing no questions from the commissioners. So. They saw your face and were petrified.
I'm muting now. Thank you.
Is there anyone who else who wishes to speak in favor of the? A permit? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the permit? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for staff recommendation.
Okay, so in terms of recommendations. You can find that staff's recommendation to approve the SUP is. Is valid and recommend approval to city council. You can find it's not appropriate and recommend denial. You can. Request or move to table the item to a date certain later if you feel there is insufficient information and and additional information is needed. As we mentioned, they do have their O M M A license. For a medical marijuana dispensary. The development code allows that within this zoning district with an SUP. They have sufficient parking. Because of those things, staff is recommending approval of the SUP. And can answer any other questions you might have.
Any questions for staff or any discussion among the commissioners? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I move that we accept findings and recommend city council approve specific use permit as presented.
I second that.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept staff recommendations and approve the application as presented. We will now vote.
Mr. Rickopen?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Room?
Yes.
And Mr. Oren?
Yes.
Vote is for yes, zero no.
The motion passes for yes and no, no's. The next item on our agenda is the meeting summary for review and possible action of the special meeting summary of June sixteenth, twenty twenty. We have a motion to accept or are there any changes which need to be made?
I move that we accept.
Excuse, excuse me if I may. This is just for whatever it's worth. I did join the meeting late, however, I was unable to participate for for whatever reason. But I was, if you will, in attendance and Cindy Gibson can verify that. I don't know if that matters worth a lick of salt. But I was, if you will, in attendance and Cindy Gibson can verify that. I don't know if that matters worth a lick of salt, but.
That, I did my best. Show, you know.
What's that?
That can be shown in the, in the, in the minutes of the meeting that make a notation that you had, that you got in there at, at point A or B, whenever that was. And you can put that in your, you know, in the acceptance too. You know, with the addition that was present as of whatever, or something like that, I suppose.
Yeah, I was about six minutes late and couldn't get in and but I, I was on the chat with Cindy Gibson, so she knew I was there, so.
Yeah.
Ooh. Big voice. So you can make a motion to accept with that addition, that that can be done. And then we sort of gather it in that way, so to speak, with that amendmentation.
Perfect. I second that. Oh, excuse me. Is, is there a motion on the floor to do that? I apologize.
I'm, I move to accept and, and to add that Brett Allred was present.
Okay, I second that.
All right. It has been moved and seconded that we accept the special meeting summary of June 16th, 2020 with the addition that Brett was there and make that notation therein.
Mr. Rickoman?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Room?
Yes.
Mr. Allred?
Yes.
Four yeses, zero no.
The, the motion to accept the meeting summary of June 16th is accepted for yes and no zeros. The last item is miscellaneous items from staff, commissioners or city attorney for discussion. The only thing we have on here is the next planning commission meeting will be delayed as of now is July 21st, 2020. A motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Did you get that shell? Sorry.
Who seconded?
I think Mike, Mike was the second.
Okay. Mr. Rickoman?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Room?
Yes.
And Mr. Allred?
Yes.
Four yes, zero no.
Motion to adjourn has passed four yeses to no zeros. Thank you all for your patience tonight. I know it was a lot of moving parts and so I appreciate it and hopefully Mike Booker will be with us in our next meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Good job, Brad.